Good morning. I'm going to ask everyone to stand. Just praying. How do we come once again thanking you all, your goodness, grace, and mercy and blessings? Thanking you, Lord, for your mercy and grace upon this nation and our state. We thank you all with the blessing and the opportunity to come serve and provide decisions, discussions for the betterment of Gates County. We ask now, Lord, that you bless all of we do. We thank you in praise of your name, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America. Thank you, the Republic, for which you stand, one nation under God, in the wisdom of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Thank you much. We call our regular Gates County Board Commissioners meeting for August 6th, 2014, for order. And the first item on our agenda will be approval of our minutes. Do you have anything for you? Are there any corrections or discussion? On page fourteen eighty. Second paragraph at the bottom. Have a title there. And that last sentence says, she stated that as we approach the Fourth of July holiday, we should pause to D H I N K. On page fourteen ninety-two. In the center of the page. Where it has the resolution ratifying the act of interim county manager as review officer reads as follows. That was left out. Reads as follows, but you don't have anything in there. All right. Any other corrections or minutes?
On seven, fourteen ninety, first paragraph, like the fourth line. Commissioner Hopp, as of current, currently there is multiple citations listed. I think it's supposed to be at one at a time.
All right. If there are no other corrections. We will call for a motion to accept the minutes for July 2nd and July 21st as a minute. Send them.
Second.
All right. Motion second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Next. Okay. The next item on our agenda will be adjustments to the agenda. We do have one adjustment to make under item section eight under new business. And we'll make that item nine. We would like to recommend the appointment of our interim clerk to the board to the position of permanent clerk to the board. Also.
Lord, so do that in September.
All right. If there are no other adjustments. We call for a motion to accept the agenda as modified.
Send them.
Second.
All right. Motion second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Okay. First item will be our citizen comments. I want to announce the delegation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I was just here to remind you, today is your annual report to the people. And you determined whether this goes to Hopp. We are prepared for you at one o'clock. If you get there earlier, that's fine. I also would like to officially announce that I'm retiring. I came April 1st, April Fool's Day, and I'm leaving on Halloween. I'll be flying all around. And it's been wonderful. I've been fortunate to be one of those people where they say, if you have something you love doing, you'll never work a day in your life. And that's what my career has been, a lot of extension. I hope that I've done what y'all needed me to do. And you'll hear more in the report to the people. And they are going to invite you to a luncheon on October 23rd. Any questions?
Well, we thank you as always for the lunch. As well as before. It's kind of bittersweet. We know you enjoy retirement, but we hate to see you go.
It was bittersweet for me, but I can afford to work without you, you know.
Thank you so much. All right. We don't have any announced delegations. The next item will be our administrative reports. We have our report from our county manager.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As everyone knows, I began work on July 1st. So most of July has been spent learning about what has taken place over the past couple of years. And getting up to speed on several of the projects that are taking place in the county. Since beginning work on July 1st, I've met with following department heads for general overview. Finance, tax administration, developmental services, water, building and grounds, register of deeds, clerk of court, emergency services, soil conservation, soil and water conservation, social services, and G I S. I also met with Dr. Williams, Mr. Winley, Lilly Yor, and Kermit Nixon regarding the conditions of the tennis courts at the community center and miss yours in the process of getting quotes to repair these courts. On July 14th, I also attended the Gates County Transportation Plan Meeting to review maps and provide recommendations. On the 15th, I attended the planning board in the planner capacity. Planner position has been advertised with the closing date of August 18th. It's been recommended that two planning board members sit in on their interviews and selections will be discussed at the August meeting. It's also recommended that a board of adjustment member participate as well as a commissioner. Tri-County Animal Shelter is interested in the concrete building that was previously discussed during the commissioners meeting. County manager Kevin Howard and commissioner chair Keith Nixon are to contact county to schedule a time to look at the building. Tri-County Shelter may not be able to move the building, however, for about a year if interested due to several issues. There will be further discussion after the building is reviewed by Chawan County officials. The Ad hoc Animal Welfare Committee met to review the animal ordinance that was presented and passed at the July 21st Board of Commissioners meeting. Municipal Engineering has been taking soil samples at the potential spray field and is expected to file an application with Dean or by the end of July. A response was submitted for Project Okeha since the response for the potential sites have been identified and Department of Commerce received 33 responses. Andreessen Company began work on the old courthouse on July 22nd. And to date, the horizontal I-beams have been installed under the second floor of the West Wing. And it is expected that construction will take place in about four weeks. Do you have any questions?
Okay. First one. I see it was recommended a board of adjustment member and a commissioner probably participate in the interview.
Correct.
To sit in on it. I think Commissioner Felton certainly fit that bill. I don't know if we, I guess it depends on who from the planning board could sit on there as well. Probably not one. Too familiar, but certainly I would recommend Commissioner Felton if no one else was very eager to serve. To be, if Commissioner Felton was willing to do that. The Tri-County Animal Shelter. To me, that seems like quite a long time, for a year. And we'd get rid of that building because we wanted it better. I would ask the board, you know, what is, what was source on that?
All right. I think our intent is to dispose of it. Anything near a year to dispose of something is quite a lengthy period of time, I believe. You know, if we would, you know, if they agreed that they do want it, it's sitting out there as a liability to us for a year. So I would say we probably, I would recommend we contact them and tell them we need the building if they're interested and give them a shorter timeline, like 30 days.
Or we put it on go deal.
Yeah.
Well, is it going to be that difficult to move? Can't you get a tilt, tilt thing and put it up there on it and move it? How large would it be?
If I may, I talked, I went and toured the animal shelter the other week and I spoke with Dana. And she showed me where they anticipate putting this building. Right now, the old crematorium is right there. They're waiting on it to be completely dismantled. And the reason they said it's anticipated that it might take a year is because they're also planning on getting two other pods, as they call them, from the old jail in Chawan County. And they wanted to move everything at one time and put it in the exact location. Instead of having to move it, put it on the back of the lot, clear the lot, and then move the shelter, or move this building up forward to where it's supposed to be located. She said they were also looking into how much it would cost to move it because she did not have a quote last week. Also let her know that I had not been contacted by the county manager or by Chair Nixon in regards to the facility. And she said that she would check with them and I should hear something within a week or so. And I've not heard anything so far.
I, you know, 30 days. Sixty days. If I just put it on go deals in that, at the time, we haven't heard anything. I think that's reasonable. I think they didn't even know about it, you know, that that would be the decision.
Have we known? You know, as soon as we started talking about disposing of that piece of property, in the same mean, it came up that the animal shelter might be able to use it. Has Billy Win, is he aware? I mean, I know he's.
He has no use for it.
No use for it. Okay. All right. Well, I would just say, you know, we're trying to give something away. And I would, I would say 30 to 60 days. Mr. Chairman, I, I think I would be in favor of certainly extending the courtesy of them, board, notify them that we want to move the building and want to move it in a 30 to 60 day period. And maybe they have first choice and give them maybe two or three weeks on first choice and then we'll put it on go deals. Would be what I would think would be.
Well, my personal opinion is if they want a building bad enough, they'll find someplace to set it until they want to set it somewhere else. I'd say the 30 to 60 days.
Right. Go deal. All right. If you relate that to them. And at our September meeting. We'll put that on the agenda to approve it, to put on go deals.
And so they got 30 days?
From this, 30 to 60 days from today. And then we will make a decision on our September 6th meeting whether or not we'll be 45, within 45 days or whatever to go on go deals.
Mr. Chairman, we're asking for some decision from the buyer September.
Exactly. Okay. The other item is municipal engineering has sent us an email, the Dean or application. If you will not, we go in by July, we'll discuss that later on. But under that, thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? All right. Our finance report. All right. One way.
I know that Commissioner Hopp has brought some questions to me. Does anyone have any questions about the reports that are in there? Budget amendments that are included are the FYI administrative amendments and the budget amendment that I have.
Of course, all, as usual, the overruns always catch eye on expenditures. I think some of them are the same that we saw last month.
Probably. And the reimbursements from the other funds have not been posted yet, so some of the total budgets look over, but until we have final numbers, we can't post those reimbursements because they're based upon the percentages of the total budgets, or total expenditures, I'm sorry. And until we post everything, we can't post those reimbursements. So those are not final numbers and that's why we still have to do the present. We're going to finish that up by the end of August.
All right. Thank you, Parker. Good to hold this one second. Sandy, I did see you have a report here. If there's no questions on that, certainly this is the report that we had. We didn't have anything to discuss about the report from the finance department, or you talk about customer service and.
Yes, that's just the monthly narrative that I put in there.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I guess as everyone knows, we got the tax bills.
Yes, we did.
Really, nothing out of the norm to report with the collector's report. You will see at the top of the page, the large figure for discoveries that you're not used to seeing, and that is because of the current tax bills being added to the levy. Do y'all have any questions in reference to the collector's report?
I don't have a copy of it.
We generally have it.
Do y'all not have?
We've had it on our email.
Okay.
I don't have it.
One second. If y'all haven't had a chance to review it in your email, yes, once you do, if you have any questions or anything, that jumpstart at you. If you want me to just drop myself in this Harold email, we'll be glad to answer any questions you have. The other item that was in your packet was just the charge for the tax collector to collect the current year taxes. And you'll see at the bottom of that where the total taxes added to the levy was $5,422,394.63. Drainage is a total of $8,011.01. The fire protection fee is $243,295. And then tane of Gatesville is $46,434.54. And this is just a charge, charge in the collector to collect these taxes and these fees.
All right. Intercourse of North Carolina General Statute 105, dash 321, B. Tax collector. You are hereby authorized, empowered, and commanded to collect the taxes set forth in the tax records filed in the office of the tax assessor and/or collector, and in the tax receipts herewith delivered to you in the amounts and from the taxpayers likewise varying set forth. Such taxes are hereby declared to be the first lien upon all real property of the respected taxpayers in Gates County. And this order shall be a full sufficient authority to direct, require, and enable you to levy on and sell any real or personal property of such taxpayers for and on account thereof in accordance with the law. North Carolina General Statute 105, three, 111B. And be witnessed by the hand and official seal this sixth day of August 2014. You are solely empowered.
Thank you.
I would question, being that this is up until September 30th. We will nearly do this again.
This charge will actually follow through to whoever comes into my position to fill out my term.
All right. This is to the collector and subsequent collector board, 14.
Yes.
All right. We need, we need a motion from the board to charge the tax collector to make the collections in accordance with the red general statute.
Send them.
Send them.
All right. Motion second. All in favor? All right. All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be proper to read that again to the new tax assessor when they come aboard.
Yes.
Y'all do not have any other questions. Ms. Harold does have a refund that she used to present to you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you will look at the second page of that, you will see a request to refund $176.14 to a taxpayer who pays prepayments every year. The last of those payments did incur an overpayment to be refunded. And at the top of the page, you will see that there was a personal bill, personal property bill for $30.67 that would be credited. And then the balance of $145.47 would be sent back to the taxpayer.
Okay. The $30.67.
That was an annual bill that was also billed for 2014 on personal property. I believe it was a vote. And that was the, that would be taken from that refund before we send back the net amount of $145.47.
So we approving $145.47?
Actually, yes, or actually to be sent back to that taxpayer.
All right. Board, we have a request for refund after adjustments for $145.47. Was correctable.
Will we approve the refund?
Mr. Chairman? Second.
Fifty seconds.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you, Mike. I have a question regarding the finance office. We have discussed as a board in the past, providing some forgiveness, if you will, or additional time for good customers who may miss a warrant, they'll pay it. And, you know, if they've had one or two, three, four years of never missing a payment and for some reason, they didn't get a payment rather than cutting their warrant off, we'd make some kind of special effort. Could you tell us where we are on implementing that?
The ladies have told me that that's been implemented.
It has been implemented.
Not heard otherwise.
Well, we didn't, we didn't vote that officially as a board enough, but we talked about it. And so if that is the new policy, I think we need to have something in writing.
That actually was, you did, you did vote that in, right? Is that what you're saying? My understanding was that was approved as a change several months ago. And that's what we've been doing. We did not change the policy to state that, but that has been practiced.
Do we, do we recall, and you said a couple of years, whatever. I think that the conversation, if I remember correctly, was we even discussed 12 months as illing, that's six months. And that, and I don't remember what was original, what was made official or what.
The final, yeah, the final was 12 months. Customers that had 12 months of perfect history with no delinquent payments, we would not cut them off. They would still incur the fees, so their water would not be disconnected. They would be allowed a little bit before we actually disconnected. And they would be allowed to roll.
Same, yeah. Also, Mr. Chairman, I may, I believe there was also comments that it was not a calendar year. It was like 12 months in a row.
Yes, it was based on their history of, if you had, yeah, going forward, if you're in late in July, we would go back 12 months from there. It wouldn't be a calendar year.
And I think one of the precautions that we had was that for Gatesville customers, we didn't have a whole year to evaluate them.
Right. We were just going to use the history that we had until we got to a year. We're actually coming up on a year, I think, October, maybe November, so we're getting close. But the discussion was that we would, if they had a perfect record with us the entire time, they would, us, we would allow that for them.
You can tell we had some phone calls recently.
Apparently, yes. Y'all have not contacted me, but if, you know, if we'll discuss that earlier after the meeting, we'd be glad to. I see what you're saying.
Sandy, does the computer generate that knowledge without really having to program something into a check or personally go there and go back through it?
I think they're checking it manually. I'll double check with them. I think can really indicate the computer from the ways of anything otherwise to me.
Is that, is that something to the program that could probably would be changed or updated with a newer program or something?
We can check again. I believe that they check.
Flag that for you?
I don't know that there's a way to do that. I think they kind of have to go in and run different reports. They have certain reports that they've run for the cutoff list, and then I believe they have to run a separate list for delinquencies and they compare the two and kind of do it manually. So it's not like we can tell it automatically not to put this person on cutoff list because those processes are tied together as far as cutoffs and cutoff fees. It's, it's just not as easy as it should be.
Mr. Chairman, can we possibly have Natalie and Sandy to look into that, to set the program, maybe can be updated that will automatically flag that, you know, account, you know, when it shows that it hasn't been paid and it will show the last time it was paid or either how many months it had been, you know, had been due.
And, of course, I think we've been having in the past two to 300 delinquent customers. And when those names are flagged, those reports are available, but you just got to go through each one and see.
Right. You actually have to run them as separate reports and compare them manually.
Commissioner Fergan is requesting that, take a look at that and see what kind of program can be implemented to give that information without having to do a single.
And know what to do. I'm trying to eliminate them having to go back through it. One, you're talking about 300 accounts and you've got to go back. Certainly some, if you're going to jump out at you that you know, that you see every month. But the ones that, you know, I think there ought to be some, in today's society, with computers like they are, there ought to be some kind of program out there or something that they can program into it that would automatically flag something like that.
And it might be just a query. And it might be just a query. I mean, maybe it would just to query delinquent within 12 months.
Right, that we can do. The issue is to run the cutoff list, you have to run that cutoff list, then run that query and compare them. The issue is we can't set this cutoff list because to run the fees and the cutoffs, it won't say only do it for people. It's more complex than it should be, but the software is just not able. And we can contact logists to see if they can do something. My understanding is, we were told they could not, but we'll check into their programs and see if that's.
Mr. Chairman, I may want to direct this to Natalie. Ken and I had spoken about offering the public the opportunity to declare their water account as a special account if they have a dialysis patient in the home or if they had an elderly person, maybe somebody and child somewhere else is paying the bills for them, situations like that. And he and I talked about, I don't know, maybe our water bills are seven digits, numbers, all numbers or whatever, that maybe we could have a letter at the end or the beginning to alert our people that, hey, this, this one's scheduled to cut off this, but there's a, there's a patient in the house. And we need to take the next step to check in on that before that activity is taken. And I was also, the conversation we had this week with someone about the water bill concerns was that, you know, if we also could use this computer program to prevent us from burning fuel and manpower to Corpee or to Hobson or wherever to cut off water. And then the person runs right up here, pays the bill, and then we run that employee right back out there with that truck to cut it off, you know?
Well, generally, they stay in the area. They do cutoffs in the morning and then obviously, like you said, but each driver cutoffs in a particular area. So they're not driving all over the county. If we have a driver that's cutting off in Corpee, they spend basically the whole day in that area and do the cutoffs and replenish water in that area. And the following day may be different. We try to lock them together the best we can, but you know, it's difficult, obviously. If somebody comes in at nine in the morning and pays the bill, we can't tell them that you need to wait till this afternoon till we have 10 more in a week. So we kind of, they do the best they can with it. They work hard to make sure, they try to keep them together and avoid as much extra driving as possible. But, you know, if people come in the way they do, it's just difficult.
And, and our last meeting, we voted to give, so people, you put, I'll put in a program so people can do it on internet to pay these bills. And hopefully, this is going to make it a little bit quicker also.
I hope so. And I know a lot of people that come in and say, I really wish you all offered automatic bank drafts, I just forget to pay the bill. So that's another thing the ladies are looking into. And hopefully, next month, we'll be able to bring that back to you to get your approval for that, where we can start setting up automatic bank drafts for people that just forget, you know? And they're also looking to accept some credit cards as well. We've got some information on that.
In the interim, County Manager and Finance Officer, we may want to look at the other personnel, other than your customer service receptionist. When we get the cutoff list, we might give it to one of our other personnel, because even if it's another department, let them do the, the research. If we have someone that may be, can give additional duties to look at that. I know we're probably, everybody's probably 95% functional in their, in their positions, but sometimes we can identify others that might be able to do the list while we're researching and finding a better way, if you will. Just thought, what do you think about that?
Somebody in the water department would be, to my opinion, that would be the person to do it, that automatically sees, all right, I see this guy's name or this person's name ever been wanted. And wait a minute, here's Mr. Ternigan's name, he pays his bill.
And the ladies are good with, they go through, and they can identify generally people that jump at us and know they've seen them last few months. So to give it to somebody else, I think would honestly be more time consuming.
Unless we did preliminary screening. All right, that's the board. Okay, we have your personnel report, personnel reports, correspondence, articles of interest in county calendar, calendar. There are no questions. Comments, we'll move forward. All right, we have no public hearings. Next item is our new business. First item is a surplus request, tax office obsolete, office equipment. Okay, you want to discuss this?
This is basically just a hodgepodge of computer equipment that has been replaced over the years and then just kind of stepped back what was taken out of service, kind of stepped back in corners and whatnot. And we went through and pulled it all together. And Mr. Curry did go through and pull out what items that he might could stockpile of the parts or something later on, or what might could be used somewhere else. And once that was done, this is basically what we were left with.
All right. Questions or not, it's a bit of a board's pleasure for putting these items on the up deals.
Mr. Chairman, I would sort of go ahead and say, let's put them on the up deals and see if we can get 50% for it.
I second that motion.
All right, motion second, that the tax surplus equipment replaced on the up deals, all in favor, aye? All opposed, aye?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is a budget amendment for ship.
This amendment is basically for the ship revenue for this year, the new revenue of $2,351. And then the $80 is a correction for the carry forward amount from last year. As we finalize the figures, there was an additional $80 to carry forward.
What does ship stand for again?
Rebound.
All right, and we have a budget amendment for us, what's the flag of the board?
Chairman, I move that we accept the amendment.
Second.
All right, motion second, accept the amendment on ship revenue, all in favor, aye? All opposed, aye? Okay, the next item is, County Manager would like to discuss with the board, possible locations to move the gyms, personnel, and the duties they perform from the EIC building to somewhere else due to mold issues. First question that came to my mind was, we're going to de-mold the building or what are we going to do with the building?
That would be it for discussion. From my understanding, there was a professional mold assessment that was conducted back in September of 2013. And in April of 2014, there was a message sent to the Board of Commissioners requesting that temporary relocation for gyms be moved to the mental health building. The HVAC unit has been worked on out there, so the building is ready to be moved into. That is one, that's the only identifiable spot that we have at the moment that would be able to handle gyms. As far as what would need to be done to the EIC building, there is a recommendation from the September 2013 EI group out of Durham, North Carolina, that talks about what needs to be done. I do believe that a lot of this has been taken care of, but all of it has not been remedied completely. And in order to complete some of the work, gyms would need to be removed from that building in order to complete the work.
How long will we think it'll take?
We would have to get someone out here to look and make a professional determination. The September 2013 EI report recommends that an industrial hygienist come back out once work is completed and have that person re-sample everything that was sampled previously in that building before anyone returns to work in there.
Do we have this budget this year?
No, not that, unless, we do have, we have $10,000.
We have $10,000, I'm sorry. To start the process. We didn't know what the total process was possible, but I did $10,000 to get the process started and find out what we needed to do.
The Old Roswell School is a historic building. And I think we put some funds into that to keep it as such. As far as moving, we're going to do all the moving in with our building grounds crew. We're not encouraging outside expense to move them.
We've not determined all of that yet. I've talked with Crystal, she said that she would like to discuss that and also get with gyms to discuss what all needed to be moved, when they could be ready to move, packing up, things like that. But if we are able to do it in-house, then there would not be any additional expense incurred in moving them.
Mr. Chairman, I think we probably could get some community help, like helping move, I know it's for service projects with some of the clubs at school have helped in the past with raising, obtaining food and all. And I think some of those young people have strong backs. And I think that some of those service clubs would jump on, maybe to help out to move the contact or church groups.
Yes, please.
And right now, we have a little bit of excess of food. We have some money within food bank, with the food bank, as we said, we had to use it or lose it. And so we've also salvaged food, so we have that access right now.
I think we could get some school groups or church groups or community organizations to help. Put the move if they were told, and I think people would step up.
Ms. Bigley, do you have a sort of a estimate of how many pickup truckloads of stuff is out there?
I have no idea.
How many?
Truck was due in next week, so again.
Oh, okay.
But probably the only food we could get was with USDA food.
How many days is gyms open during the week?
Yeah, Monday and Sunday.
For two hours each day, correct?
All right. We would need to make a decision to give County Manager authorization to move forward. We have completing the relocation and up until what we've funded to start the mold removal process or assesses or whatever we need to do to get that building back into a proper living status.
And we need to get a head start on advertising the move so people will know, they won't go there, they'd have to go to the relocation, I think that would be important.
And we need to coordinate that with the county, Gates County, next turn.
May I ask a question? At the new location, do you have a shelving already in place for it, for the food?
I'm not, Crystal said that it was ready. We wanted to make sure it was okay with the board before we went ahead and did anything else that needed to be done in case someone else had other ideas about what needed to be moved out there. She said as far as she knew, she thought there looked like there was enough space to store all the food and provide counter space, covers, that sort of thing.
Our group, we have a freezer, refrigerated freezer complications, we need to get that in for that.
That'd be pretty heavy, yeah.
Well, I think, I think the maintenance would have to do that.
All right. Do we have a motion to authorize County Manager to move forward and going to relocation for gyms out of the Old Roswell School to the new location? Let me.
Second.
My motion's second. County Manager, now advise, all in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, aye? All right, we got an amendment to the budget, FY15 to the budget ordinance. You want me to go, you want to go with this, or is Sandy, I think we discussed this and I can pay back to you.
It's pretty straightforward. This year's budget ordinance, I apologize. I just didn't want to talk over to you already. This year's budget ordinance included a requirement for organizations to which the county appropriates money to provide financial statements to the county prior to receiving those appropriations. There was a requirement in there for organizations that received $5,000 or more to actually have an audit and provide that to the county. This was something that was added by Mr. Winkley, who I think comes from larger counties. And I think that maybe that was appropriate for larger counties who appropriated to larger organizations. But I can see it creating a hardship here in the county for the organizations that you appropriate funds to. My recommendation is to leave the requirement to provide financial service, or financial statements to us, but remove the audit requirement. This was brought about, honestly, by a request from Mr. Jordan, because it's created a hardship, I think, for the housing committee.
Right, and that was one of the things we did, we appropriated $7,500. And certainly, the housing committee maintains financial statements, but to, and they are audited internally, reviewed. But to bring it outside audit firm for such a small organization and the amount of funds that we handle, and letting some of the funds are grant funds, it would certainly be an additional expense that would not serve the purpose. So we talked to Finance Officer Sandy and, and what was the right thing to do was modify the list.
Certainly, in the housing authority situation, some of that money is grant money, so they're already forwarding paperwork to the grant people, which is in itself somewhat of an audit, as I said.
All right, what is the pleasure of the board on the amendment to the FY15 budget ordinance?
Chairman, I move that we amend that budget ordinance to reflect what's been presented to us by Ms. Pittman this morning.
All right, have a motion. Second.
Second.
All right, motion second, all in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, aye? Thank you. Okay, next item, our, will be appointed our clerk to the board as a permanent clerk. The personnel board met today and it's been recommended by them that a clerk, a person aboard who has served since, I believe, about March or April, and has done a great job, that should be appointed permanently as clerk. And also, there are some training, there is some training and certification that may go along with that. County Manager will look into that and, and bring additional information back to us in September, but for the time being, we would like the board to consider appointing Ms. Elizabeth Cole as our clerk to the board. What is the pleasure?
I make a motion that we appoint Melissa Cole permanently as clerk.
Second. My motion's second, the board has got it. All in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, aye? All right, the board. All aboard. I just for board's information, I did ask Melissa, was she ready to say aye to this All right, if there are no other items, or other items, or any other citizens' comments that want to come forward, if not, we'll have our commissioner comments. Who wants to start today?
I do. Thank you everyone for being here this morning. Got quite a few phone calls since the last meeting, and, but they were all inquiries, let the board do, because it was all good views, but it was all inquiries into what's going on in this area and that area. And I was able to give them information. I think that satisfied their mind. But we all do appreciate hearing direct from the citizens of the county. And so, we are all available with phone call at your service. And again, we thank you for the support of the commissioners. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank everybody that's coming this morning. This seems like a mighty short meeting, but at this time of year, we try to sort of do that in the summer. It makes it, you know, a lot of people on their vacations and trying to get, get their vacations in before school starts, which is a very short period away. I think it's August twenty-fifth, the kids go back to school. So I guess the teachers, they got, what, maybe one more week, then they're back. So we're certainly glad that everybody came, that, that does come, and we look forward to seeing you again. Thank you.
Well, once again, I thank you for coming. It's always nice to see the citizens of the county, and as Commissioner Owens has stated, we certainly love to hear from you, and we, you know, we, you sometimes see things that we don't, and it really does help us to do our job. And thank you again.
I too. Thanks to all for coming. I thank all the department heads for the very concise reports given this morning. And it's always good to get those, and good to get the comments from the citizens, too. Just appreciate y'all coming.
All right. All right, I too. Thank everyone for coming. It's good to see everybody. Good to see that we're all still interested in our local government, and what's going on, and having an input. I like Commissioner Owens, Vice Chair. I thank you for the phone calls. I, I get quite a few sometimes, but certainly, that's why we're here. And so, don't hesitate. If there's something you need to be aware of, you can take the letter stuff. I do have one announcement I have to make, is that Congressman Butterfield will be at the Gateway Health Center, I believe, on Friday, August the fifteenth, at ten thirty to eleven forty-five. Commissioners are invited per those terms. So just a little bit of additional information, our health center was certified. I think that was a bit of surprise to some of us. We, we did not know if they would be able to stand on their own, but obviously, they knew someone. And the Gateway Health Center is now, is certified, or has been granted funds to become certified, or however that works. And so, we should be back up and running as we work forward. So August fifteenth, at ten thirty to eleven forty-five, please make a note of that. Today, if we can, try to be there. All right. Again, thank everyone for coming, and if there's nothing else, we will call a motion to go into closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven eighty-three, four, and six.
Motion to go to closed session.
Motion's second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? All right, do we need a motion to come out of closed session?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? All right, we have two items to vote on from closed session. First is to authorize our county attorney to draw up an amendment to the purchase contract discussed in closed session, and have the chairman and attorney present that to the opposed landowner. Do we need a motion for that?
So move? Second.
Our motion's second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Okay, our second item is to authorize the tax administrator to move forward with notifying the tax software company to proceed with filling the order and installation as of today.
So move?
Second.
Our motion's second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? All right, we will take a recess and come back and adjourn and discuss whatever else we need to do. Back for about an hour. All right, we're going to call our board meeting back to order from our recess. And if you look at the agenda... We need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Our motion's second, and adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.